Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this 2021 Global ICT Collaboration Conference hosted by the Ministry of Science and ICT of Korea and organized by IITP. I'm going to be your emcee today. My name is Juran. And despite the COVID pandemic situation, thank you for joining us, be it offline or online. Today, we are going to identify latest joint research trends in the area of ICT among countries, including Korea, US, EU, and UK. So I hope today's event serves to further advance joint research and international collaboration. This event can be viewed through the Zoom invitation link as well as the official YouTube channel of IITP. And for more details of today's event, including the program, please visit our event's official website. Today's program, we have special session followed by main session. So we will start with the first session. It will be the Cybersecurity Workshop between Korea and Spain. And this session will be introduced by Mr. Jordi Esperbach of the CDTI of Spain.
Hello. Yes, good afternoon here in Korea, morning in Spain. This is the first session on cybersecurity, for which we'll have a total of eight speakers from Spain with plenty of experience in the field. So the idea is to have a broad understanding on cybersecurity in Spain and the current status. This first session, I think, is 90 minutes in total, so we'll have plenty of time to address all the issues. And it's part of, as it's been said, it's part of the Global ICT Research Innovation Collaboration Conference, rather focused on cybersecurity specifically and the country of Spain for this session. I would like to thank the organizers, especially Minister of Science and ICT, and the Institute for Information Communication Technology Planning and Evaluation, short for ITP, as well as, I think, a personal thing, the Spanish Defense Attache, Angel Gómez de Aguirre, for his strong support and bring this solid list of speakers, and of course, all the speakers that will speak later on. My name is Jordi Esperbach, as it's been said, and I'm the Science and Technology Council at the Spanish Embassy and the Director of CDTI. In short, CDTI stands for Center for Development of Industry and Innovation. And it's a public funding agency in the Spanish Ministry of Science and Innovation in Spain. And what basically CDTI is doing is promote, evaluate, and finance joint research projects at both national and international level, and in this case, doing, myself being in Korea as a representative of CDTI, join cooperative projects with Korean entities. The pandemic, it has accelerated the project of digitalization, there is no doubt here, especially in those countries where confinement were the norm. And I think pretty much in every country in the world was this situation. For instance, in Spain, normally we used to go to the office and work. Nowadays, working from home, part-time is also an option. So as well in the industry side, the impact was terrible. Global logistics and distribution channels were interrupted. Still, they're not fully functional. We have the supply chain is still suffering from that. And then digitalization process helps with that to solve these problems. So I think we all agree that we need to have a better digital infrastructure for both, for the use of society and the industry as a whole. This implies a transformation on how we deal in our daily lives from many aspects, from education, from e-health, for instance, those who need treatment can be treated from home, e-government, how we deal with information that we need to provide to the government, e-commerce, teleworking, and so on. And then it's mandatory to some extent, or to full extent, I should say, to guarantee that all users, that data is being used in a safe and secure mode and not being exposed to those not wanted. I'm talking about hackers, yes. Technologies of cybersecurity in the digital domain, we all agree that it must be treated, the information treated in a safe mode and it's safely processed. Therefore, cybersecurity, it's one of the main pillars in the digital agenda of Spain and totally aligned with the European Union. I'm sure, I know by facts, that also Korea, it's addressing this issue as well. Actually, in the joint conference between the governments of Korea and Spain in 2017, the cybersecurity was on the table and that was addressed. And through this, today's conference, I think, will go deeper into those talks and what we could do in that specific field. Before I follow in with the speakers, I would like to talk briefly about a joint cooperation program that we have between the ministries of Spain and Korea to support joint research. The program is called CRESIP, stands for Korea-Spain Innovation Program. It's managed by, I'll be brief with that, because the voice is for the speakers today, not for to present this program. But I think it's good for the audience to have a brief understanding on this joint R&amp;D program between Spain and Korea. It's managed by CDTI in Spain and ITP here in Korea with a very clear objective, which is to promote and fund market-driven research and technology development, as well as to encourage participants, partnerships, and business-led research and development in innovation collaborative projects between the entities of the two countries in a thematic meaning that some technologies are chosen in the information and communication domain. For you to have an idea, in 2020, the first call for proposals was in the artificial intelligence, applied to practically everything, to the society and industry. Society, I mean smart city, education, public administrations, and so on. Industry, I mean industry 5.0, energy, environment, safety, and so on. The beneficiaries of this government support is for companies of any kind, large and small and medium enterprises, as well as research institutes and universities. There has to be a minimum to be eligible, one entity for each country, one Spanish entity, one Korean entity, which then can add on more companies and research institutes and universities to partner on. It follows kind of a bottom-up nature, so you decide as participants how the consortium, how you will deal with all the research activities for as long as it means the criteria, which meaning in ICT technologies. And for a duration of between one and three years. So it's to support you in those R&amp;D activities for the period of time to develop a new product, process, or services that will be commercialized in the market. I'm saying "commercialized" because it has to have an orientation, market orientation, and in the assessment part, that will be assessed properly to make sure that it produces some tangible results from the market specifically. Also, there will be an assessment on the technology, so the degree of technological maturity and the degree of innovation to make sure that the project meets the criteria for what comes from the technological point of view. And the funding, the funding itself, it's decentralized, it comes from CDTI in Spain. So all the Spanish entities will be funded through CDTI and all the Korean entities will be funded by IITP. And without any further ado, I think, that's pretty much what I wanted to say in this first part, that CRESIP will be launched again when the project's finished. There are two ongoing projects currently, so we expect new calls. And yes, that's, I think, it's also some value for you. And then I pass back on the voice to the moderator. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, these days, the cybersecurity and international collaboration are getting more important. So thank you very much for that introduction to this special session.
We'll now begin the first presentation of the special session. This presentation is, the first session is on the topic of Spanish cybersecurity policy and current status. Professor Javier Pereira, the Technical University of Madrid, will introduce us to Project ELISA and Master AI for Gov. We're going to listen to his presentation via online. Sir, I think you're on mute.
Students, roughly 3,000 teaching staffs and researchers. We have more than 100 degrees and we have from this, 94 double-degree agreements with international universities. We are number one in Spain and Latin America in the technical realm, and we are very well positioned in the different university rankings in specific areas, in set engineering, like civil engineering, we're number six in the world. Or architecture, we are number 27, and engineering mineral and mining, we're 35. Overall, in the field of engineering and technology, we're rank 58 in the QS ranking. And we are especially proud that in the university system in Spain, we are number one in patent applications and in new technology venture creation. We're also number one in the capacity of attracting European Union research funds and in projects with industry, in research and innovation, we're also number one for the last years. We have a strong international focus with more than 5,000 international students and we have partnerships with the best technical universities in Europe, in North America, Latin America, and of course, Asia. Let me talk to you about the ELISA alliance. That's from the initiative by European Union of European universities. Our proposal for leading nine top technical universities in Europe has been funded, has been selected, and we aim in this alliance led by UPM to define the model of the future European engineer. We want it to be deeply rooted in society. That's why what we have planned in this alliance is to have our students applying what they have learned in different courses to real-world challenges of the society, applied from a sustainability point of view. And we have created communities for the different challenges. One of them is technology diplomacy, that I will tell you a bit about at the end of the presentation. We have two permanent delegations outside of Spain. One in Harvard University as part of Real College Complutense, that allows us to have research programs for our professors and students to the research states. And we have double degrees with very relevant world universities like the MIT or Georgia Tech. And we also have a permanent delegation in Asia, in the city of Shanghai, in Tongji University, where we have the Sina Spanish campus. Our presence in Asia started around 2000, so we've been more than 20 years in the area. And we have a permanent delegate of the university in Shanghai from 2012. I am currently this permanent delegate as in my role as Rector's Delegate for Asia and I'm also co-director of the Sina Spanish campus that we have in Tongji together with UBC and Tongji, who are the founders together with us. And we have opened it recently to other top technical universities in the Spanish-speaking world. And Tecnológico de Monterrey and Universidad Sevilla have recently joined our Sina Spanish campus, which is the only active platform in Asia-Pacific for Spanish-speaking universities. In the area of Asia, we have a big activity. Before the pandemic, we moved more than 200 students per year in both directions and more than 50 professors per year. And we also started more than 15 research projects with our main partners in the area. We have a seed funding program to push this collaboration. Recently, we have funded seed projects with partners in China, Malaysia, Japan, and Singapore, and hopefully soon in Korea. We have a startup incubator in Shanghai and we have another big project in the area. We will be starting operations of the UPM Nanjing Innovation Center in 2023, jointly created with our partners of the Nanjing Economic and Technological Development Zone. We aim to provide the basis for all entrepreneurs, established companies, and researchers that want to do some technology transfer, some commercialization, or some technology cooperation with Chinese partners. We will offer them this office, working hand-in-hand with the CDTI, that organizes this forum, and also with the Spanish Embassy and the Spanish consulate. And about the topic that we are focusing on in this forum, IT and cybersecurity, we have a strong research activity in the area of IT. Our School of Computer Science was the first founded in Spain together with UPB and UPC, that they were founded at the same year. And we're especially strong in areas like artificial intelligence, because the Department of Artificial Intelligence at UPM was created 46 years ago, when AI was not as fashionable as today. So we have a very strong background in AI and we're researchers very high in the world in the different areas of AI. Here you have a overview of these different areas in AI. For example, in semantic web and ontology engineering, in all areas related to data science and big data. And we apply this to different domains like health, transport, security, agriculture, education, energy, or public services. In cybersecurity, we have researchers in different research groups, but we have two big research centers that have some focus on cybersecurity and defense. The main one is the Information Processing and Telecommunications Center, IPTC, where the main lines of research are dynamic risk management, the application of AI to cybersecurity, machine learning for anomaly detection, ontologies and expert systems for decision-making systems, cybersecurity of Internet of Things, and privacy engineering. You can see on the right part the different specific projects that this center is working on. And we also have an AI innovation space center that has a specific line of research of AI applied to the defense domain and has been participating, or has been a member of the working group at the Spanish Strategy for Technology and Innovations for Defense. Another project that I would like to talk to you about is about our Master for AI for Governments. It's a project funded by the European Union together with Politecnico de Milano in Italy and Fauer Langen in Germany for providing knowledge needed by professionals working in the public services so that they can be prepared for the digital transformation that we are experiencing, especially in relationship with artificial intelligence. We also are, in the project, there is the part of creating or establishing a European Union Center of Excellence on AI for the Public Sector. And we work also in the area of technology diplomacy. Universities, and especially the ones that have a long experience in international relations, like UPM, we strongly think that we have an important role in training professionals that will work in the international area. More and more, working internationally is important for our professionals in technology. And then we think that they need a solid understanding of how technology, science, and innovation are shaping international relationships. There are a lot of geopolitical issues related to technology in areas like data privacy, of course, cybersecurity, and also in things related to human rights and the European values that we carry in UPM and the European Union. So we have been awarded the Jammonet Chair on Tech Diplomacy, that is chaired by our professor Claude Vifio, who has extensive experience also in Asia. And we have a ELISA community on tech diplomacy to train faculty and students in the importance of technology diplomacy. And we aim to contribute to society, our knowledge about this role for our experience internationally. Thank you very much for your attention. I will be happy to answer your questions, either in this forum or through the social media or through email. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Professor. So we heard about the ELISA and AI for Gov project. Now, we will again hear from another professor, Professor Manuel Estef of the Technical University of Madrid, and he's going to talk about the recent development in the cybersecurity.
Cyberintelligence and cyber situational awareness, this is our expertise. And we have developed some projects with the Spanish Cyber Command related with cyberintelligence. And the more relevant of this project is PSYCO. PSYCO is a cyber situational awareness application with the possibility of visualization of real units in the world, in real-world units, okay? Well, I am going to share a short presentation. Okay, a short presentation about cyberintelligence. Okay, cyberintelligence. Today, I think that cyberintelligence is the stone corner of the cybersecurity. In the slide, you can see a definition of cyberintelligence. It's the information collection and analysis process to identify, track, predict, and respond attackers' capabilities, intentions, and activities, and offer context-based defense strategies to improve decision-making process. Okay. Really, in short, cyberintelligence is to know in advance all about threats to prevent the occurrence of these threats, the materialization of these threats in attacks. And when, if these threats at the end happens, try to limit the impact of cyberattacks, the impact of cyber incidents in our systems, okay? Then to this, we must obtain information from our own systems and we must obtain information from attackers. What types of cyberintelligence are? The lexicon of cyberintelligence is very related with a military lexicon. And it's an agreement that there are three types of cyberintelligence: strategic intelligence, operational intelligence, and tactical intelligence. Strategic intelligence is related with all the overall picture of the intents and capabilities of malicious threats, cyberthreats, okay? And it's very usual in cyberintelligence to answer questions, to analyze the situation. In this case, strategic intelligence tries to answer the questions, who and why? Who is attacking me and why, why they are attacking me? Okay, and this information is very relevant for high-level decision-makers in organizations. The second level is the operational intelligence and it's related with the guides and support of the response to the specific incidents. Sometimes, this intelligence is named threat intelligence because consists of collecting and analyzing all possible information about threats, about possible threats, current threats, and future threats, okay? And third, the third level of intelligence is the tactical intelligence and it's related with the support for day-to-day operations and events. For instance, it's related with signature malware or it's related with other indicators of compromise, like, for instance, an incident related with the night of service characterization at network traffic level, ETC. Okay, and our expertise is, inside the cyberintelligence, is especially focused in cyber situational awareness. Okay, cyber situational awareness now is in the top, currently is in the top of cyberintelligence. In the down of cyberintelligence will be the monitoring activities, the correlation of these monitoring activities by means of CMS will be the second step. And the third step of cyberintelligence is the generation of the cyber situational awareness. Situational awareness is not a concept related only with cyberintelligence. It's related with command and control information systems in general. And a separate definition of situational awareness is the perception of the elements of the environment within a volume of time and space, the comprehension of their meaning, and the projection of their status in the near future. Okay. That is, this concept can be applied to command and control information systems, inland systems, or can be applied to psychology. Really, situational awareness is a psychological concept, it's a concept related with psychology. Because it's to know what is happening, to know what I am doing and knowing what I'm doing, my friends, and what are doing my enemies, okay? Well, and the way to materialize, to produce situational awareness most often is the generation of the common operational picture. Common operational picture is a concept related with situational awareness. It's, you can see a definition, is a single identical display of relevant information shared by more than one command. It's also a military terminology, but can be applied not only in the military field, also in any business field. A common operational picture facilitates collaborative planning and assists all echelons to achieve situational awareness, okay? COP is the COP, the Common Operational Picture, is the technical way to provide situational awareness to decision-makers of different command echelons and levels, tactical, operational, and strategical. And really, a common operational picture is the way to visualize the situational awareness, okay? And I said that we have a strong collaboration with the Spanish Cyber Command, with the Spanish Ministry of Defense, okay? And we have developed for the Ministry of Defense, the Spanish government, we have developed some tools, previous, 15 years ago. Previous, fifteen years ago, we developed the PCL for tracking system was the command and control information system at tactical level for the Spanish army. And during last year, we are working with the Spanish Cyber Command. And we have developed a specific application to generate cyber situational awareness that is named PSYCO, okay? Also, we have developed in collaboration with some companies, another application, another tool for applied in artificial intelligence in the threat hunting activity, okay? But taking as base of ingestion, collection of information or PSYCO application. Okay, here you can see. This is PSYCO. This is PSYCO, it's our application developed for the Spanish Cyber Command, okay? Basically, PSYCO integrates intelligence from different sources of cyber intelligence, signal intelligence from CMS, other types, or other tools, monitoring tools, also open source intelligence, shared intelligence integrating tools like MISP, okay? Or RTAR, okay? And have the capability of or produce, give to the, give to the analyst the capability of analyze information of these different sources of intelligence and correlate this information to generate a more accurate and more elaborated knowledge about the cyber situation of our systems, okay? And a part very interesting or very relevant in this tool is the capability of visualization, the capability of visualization of cyber intelligence information using usual cyber intelligence graph or charts like this. You can see in P-charts, bar charts, heavy dynamics, circle charts, bubble charts or heat maps charts and visualize also information, hair reference set information is cyber information related with military units. Because the idea of PSYCO is to visualize together the situation, the state of availability of military units in relationship with their cybersecurity situation. Then we can visualize assets associated with military units, but we can visualize also. We can visualize also different types of vulnerabilities associated with with these assets. We can visualize. For instance, this is a graph of vulnerabilities associated with one unit. We generate a very, very impressive, I think, graphs with a lot of information that this information usually is obtained from different tools. The power, the power of PSYCO is the capability to integrate the information generated by different tools in only one, only one tool, okay? And if we click over every dot in this type of graphs, we obtain the associated information, in this case, for instance, about vulnerabilities that we have detect in different systems that are visualized in this graph. Okay, and we can visualize also in a, in a first glance the cybersecurity situation of units related with data assets. And we can visualize also the difference data flows between assets and the state of cybersecurity of assets. Every asset is visualized by a mean dot. If dots are in blue, it have not a compromise. And if any dot that represents an asset is in red, in this case, this asset have some compromise, okay? This is PSYCO, this is our tool. Of course, this is a very brief presentation. PSYCO have a lot more of capabilities or related with the, related with related with following of data flows, all related with risk analysis because our tool, the cyber situational awareness is based in the analysis of risk previous to the execution of the tool, this analysis of our system, of our assets. At the end, the objective is to visualize the availability, in this case, of military units, but can be applied, for instance, to critical infrastructure protection or to protection of in any business, any business field, protection of components, elements that are related with the real world, for instance, in industrial control system or traffic control systems, okay? That is to put together the cyber, the cyber intelligence with the real world, with the kinetic world, okay? And I am going to to finish my presentation. Thank you very much for your attention. And I, I am ready for answer questions by email when you, when you needed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
네, 고맙습니다. Yes, thank you very much. The topic of cyber intelligence, Professor Manuel Esteban gave a very interesting presentation. Thank you very much. We are going to now listen to the final presentation of the first session. Professor Lorenzo Cortino of University of Valencia will talk about the cybersecurity from the legal framework.
Good afternoon in Korea. Thank you very much for Mr. Gómez de Agredán for the invitation for this Korean-Spanish cybersecurity workshop. I am Lorenzo Cortino, specialist in digital law. I'm going to focus on legal aspects indeed of cybersecurity and privacy in the European Union. I hope there is not a problem with the sharing of the screen. For almost thirty years, the European Union has had a common, has had a common privacy and data protection regulations. In particular, it has become much more intense and with more guarantees with the new GDPR of 2016. The starting point is that all those who process the data, personal data, are obliged to comply with preventive obligations to prevent risks from occurring. As it is said in Spain, prevention is better than cure. It is the principle of proactive responsibility, privacy by design and by default, which includes data protection officers, obligations of staff. And among the many obligations, there are security concrete ones as data anonymization obligations. In addition, for many years, there have been strong independent agencies, more than one, 1.2 billion euros in penalties in 2021 by these agencies. In cyber, cybersecurity, in the last six years, now thirty years like in privacy, there is a strong policy and regulations. Before, it was more regulated by each state of the twenty-seven of the European Union. And there were big differences and the market was fragmented and it was very negative also for cybersecurity, not only for the market. First step is called NIES, Network and Information Security Act, the directive. It has been fifteen days ago, it has been renewed in November of 22 with the called NIES two. This new version have more concrete concepts and obligations. This law defines who are operators of essential services and digital service providers. And for these subjects, there are obligations as the obligations to designate an information security officer, obligation to adopt a network and information systems, security policies, risk management, prevention, response and recovery, periodic assessment and definition of roles and tasks. There are requirements of security incidents management, obligations of incident reporting, obligations to the information security officer. It has to, he has to make a document of applicability of these security measures and it has to be reviewed every three years. Another big step, it has been in nineteenth year, the European Cybersecurity Act. On the one hand, it regulates, regulates the European Agency of Cybersecurity, NISA. With more functions and more responsibilities, it provides support to the member states, the European institutions and others. It has regulator, more software regulator roles and especially about certification. Because on the other hand, this law regulates a wide European cybersecurity certification scheme, especially to avoid fragmentation and redundancy in the certification market, always with a big level of cybersecurity. There are clear criteria for independent and accredited bodies to verify the list of requirements. And these bodies, if they control the requirements, they can carry out conformity assessments and give certifications. These certifications are voluntary, but they could be mandatory. In 2021, in 2021, there were regulations that creates the European Centre of Industrial, Technological and Research Competence in Cybersecurity, the Network of National Coordination Centers, also the Joint Cyber Unit for Cooperation between the countries and the European Union in cybersecurity. And in any case, the big step, the big step has been very recent, September 22. It is the proposal of the Cyber Resilience Act. It is not passed now, but probably next year and enforced in two years. And it introduces mandatory cybersecurity requirements for digital products, hardware and software. The manufacturers of digital products are responsible of cybersecurity throughout all the life cycle in planning, designing, development, production, delivery and maintenance phase. All the cybersecurity risks have to be documented. Manufacturers will have to report actively vulnerabilities and incidents. It will be better transparency about the products for the users with clear and understable instructions about cybersecurity. The obligations will be at least for five years to ensure vulnerabilities and security updates for at least five years. Also, the new rule will establish standards and harmonized rules, cybersecurity requirements. And it could be concrete decisions that with these rules and standards, ninety percent of the products, the digital products will be subject only to a self-assessment by the manufacturers. But ten percent are considered critical digital products. And the compliance have to be ensured by a third person or the fulfillment of standards. It is the case of password managers, network interfaces, firewalls, microcontrollers, operating systems, industrial firewalls, computers and other secure elements. Well, and another important, very important regulation, it will be in some, in few months, the new European Regulation of Unartificial Intelligence, the first general regulations over the world. I am collaborating with the Spanish Secretary of State for artificial intelligence to test for the first time this new regulation. It will be the first pilot program in Europe. And in this regulation, there are called high-risk systems of artificial intelligence. These high-risk systems have to fulfill a lot of obligations and between them, a group of obligations about robustness and cybersecurity. Also, it will be regulated, the special liability of the products of artificial intelligence. Well, thank you very much. The most important thing is that all policies, regulations, strategies, they have to be really, really effective. And thank you very much. I am at your disposal. Thank you.
네, 고맙습니다. 사이버 보안의 법적 Thank you very much. We heard a very nice presentation on the cybersecurity from the legal perspective. Now, with that, we will conclude the first session on the cybersecurity and we'll move on to the second session which will focus on the Spanish cybersecurity technology trend, international cooperation. First, let me invite Mr. Miguel Angel Hanada of the Spain National Cybersecurity Institute for his presentation on the latest status of cybersecurity in Spain.
Thank you very much. It's a very big pleasure to be here today in this live city around the collaboration conference in the name of the Spanish National Institute for Cybersecurity. We're very proud to share these moments with you in order to show you how important is for Spain the traditional cooperation with our brothers in Korea. A warm greeting for all of you and all our best desires in these times of uncertainty where cybersecurity is more necessary than ever. We offer with the strong support of the European Union framework all the capabilities of research with our companies and with our centers and universities devoted to cybersecurity. If you show, let me show you some tools that I think are very interesting in order to to understand how important is the cybersecurity in Spain and how we can offer this international framework of cooperation. In 2013, our National Institute of Cybersecurity of the Government of Spain promote the establishment of an Spanish Network of Excellence on Cybersecurity Research called RENIC. This network has different members. Most of them you can find in this research map in cybersecurity where every three months, we maintain a current census of the different of the different research teams and the top issues that we are investing in Spain and that are strategic for the development of our internal European Union market. And this moment, you can find more than fifty research teams along the national territory. These are distributed in a census of four hundred and seventy researchers, distributed in twenty-seven universities, seven research centers and four technological centers. This network with an average of eight researchers per team is working. Most of them are very close to the private sector and of course with governmental agencies like ours. And at this moment, we can identify different areas of interest from Internet of Things Security, Network Security, authentication, cryptography authentication. All of them have allowed with us to gain with the top three countries obtaining more return from the competitive calls of the European Union in research programs in the last decade. This is very important because we guarantee that our international projects for Spain are strongly supported by the government. One example of this commitment with the international cooperation and research is of course the public investment. This is our webpage of the National Institute of Cybersecurity. You will find in other themes, the innovative public procurement program, the most ambitious program in the European Union at this moment. With more than two hundred and twenty-four million euros in the next three years, we are investing at this moment, different areas in order to promote the research and development in cyber security between private companies in Spain, but in particular consortia between large companies, research organizations, universities and these small and medium enterprises. That are very important because at this moment, we depend extremely from these small and medium agents in order to reach enough levels of capabilities in a sector of the cyber security that is very fragmented where we need to maintain proximity strategy in order to be very close between the ICT cyber security companies and their demand at the local territories. At this moment, this public purchasing program covers seven different actions in order to this investment with projects that at this moment represent this two hundred and twenty-four million euros. I mentioned before, at this moment, we have selected more than two hundred and twenty projects with an average investment of one million euro in these projects. We have of course projects more little with three hundred and thousand euros of investment and other projects with more than three, four million euros. But are distributed below along these actions, including big research and development projects, other players, innovation projects in technological solutions for cyber security in small and medium enterprises, strategic sectors, public sector solutions devoted to strategic areas, critical infrastructures in particular, and small highly innovative cyber security projects carried out by small and medium enterprises or entrepreneurs. In this sense, any kind of research project where there is a side related to entrepreneurship is very important for us. We have another line of investment of one hundred and ninety-eight million euros devoted to entrepreneurship. So with these two big programs, we expect to face this challenge to have a new generation of new companies in a new global market where finalizing, we expect to have many Korean companies working with Spanish companies. We research teams of our network of technological and university centers devoted to cyber security. And of course, we offer from this moment all the support of our International Office for Research through our webpage, through our networks and this mail contact you can find in my screen. So definitely, we are facing together these times of uncertainty. It's very important to us to build new framework of a global market where we expect to build more strong, innovative capable companies around European Union. Spain is a very strong and confident partner for Korea. Also for Korea is an opportunity to work strongly with European Union through Spain. Thank you very much and good luck with the rest of the journey.
네 고맙습니다.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation on the current status of cyber security in Spain. And next, we're going to welcome Felix de Tena, Colonel Perez de Tena of the Ministry of National Defense.
Good morning. Welcome to this presentation. I am the Sergeant First Class Felix Martin. And during the next ten minutes, I will introduce you into our Spanish Joint Cyber Command, which is under command of Major General Mr. Rafael Garcia Hernandez. First of all, let me use this opportunity to welcome you into our common international organization, the Cyber Defense Center of Excellence. I have no doubts that from now on, we will have many chances to cooperate together. Next slide, please. Throughout this speech, we are aiming to show you certain basic concepts about our cyber command. After the presentation, we hope that you will know more about the structure and the mission of our unit, as well as the capabilities, capacities and means that we have. The cyber environment is in constant evolution, so we want to reassure that our staff is always ready, prepared and trained. In addition to this organic tasks and structure, it is important for us to highlight that in Spain, we have three CERTs, which gather every European Union requisite to be considered as SO. As you probably know, a CERT is a computer emergency response team and our cyber command leads the military one in Spain. Next slide, please. As we can see through this image, operations environment is in constant evolution, becoming more and more complex every day. In modern conflict, we assist to a global synergy formed by the traditional spaces of combat, land, air and maritime environment, plus space and cyberspace. Many national armored forces are beginning to include cyber and space units among their structure to cover these new threats. All of these elements are controlled by a single command and control structure. Our main task as Joint Cyber Command is to allow this to happen and to allow this command and control network to operate. So our chain of command is always ready to make any decision necessary according to the operational status. Next slide, please. Another way to understand what I have mentioned before is by observing this couple of images. As we can see, there is an artillery forward observer linked with attack aircrafts as well as many other units over the terrain. The chief of every operation has to see the operational exactly like this. The Spanish Joint Cyber Command is one of the key tools to make this possible. This is purely a coordination task, but our unit is as well a combat unit. So as you can see in the second image, our task is also aiming to make the enemy's operational map look like this, as blurred as you see in the image. Next slide, please. Now that we have understood how complex is the new environment and which our main tasks are, we will briefly mention the types of threats that we face in the Spanish Joint Cyber Command. First of all, we find the physical threats. From the loss to a laptop, to a stolen USB stick or a physical attack to our infrastructure or facilities, there are many ways to understand this kind of threats, always dangerous. Secondly, we find the logical threats. These kind of threats and attacks are usually targeting our protocol, software and operative system. They are the type that we imagine when we think about cyber attacks. The third type is related with us, with the operators of cyberspace, no matter our level or situation. These human threats are more common than we expect and than we of course would desire and are usually based on ignorance, impunity or negative sense. Next slide, please. From here, really quick, we are going to see the Joint Cyber Command structure. As you see, we can say that the unit is a small army by his own right. We have the command, supported by the headquarters and below this main structure, the logistics and combat units. The brown squares are related with every unit needed for the operational force to operate, which is colored in blue. This blue square represent our offensive capabilities in the cyberspace environment. Next slide, please. In addition of the last structured chart that we have seen, our cyber command is also part of the permanent operations conducted by the military headquarters. Inside this framing, we are named as MOC, M O C, which in English means Operative Cyberspace Command. As you can see, within this operational structure, every different military branch has its own responsibility. As we have mentioned, our main task is to guarantee the free access and use of the cyber environment to our units and forces. Next slide, please. These permanent operations are conducted twenty-four hours during every single day. The main target above every other is to ensure security of the Spanish national territory, infrastructure, national airspace, territorial waters and of course cyberspace. As fact that we want to share during two thousand twenty-one, Spain stopped more than one thousand cyber attacks. In this slide, you can also check in which different scenarios Spain is having deployed armored forces, always supported by our cyber command. Next slide, please. We will close this presentation mentioning the three main capabilities of our Joint Cyber Command. As you can see, defense, exploitation and response. Next slide, please. Within defense tasks, we conceive every procedure which aims to ensure the security of our own means. This state of security can be achieved using solid procedures such as inspections, physical security or access control. There are more abstract procedures like the update of doctrine and enhancement of training or developing new legal aspects from cyberspace. Nowadays, we are working closely with the European Union to give a legal framework from we can operate legally protected. Next slide, please. For everybody that knows the cycle of intelligence, this exploitation cycle will be easy to understand. Exploitation is the cyber intelligence itself. It is in charge of analyzing cyber threats and to gather information regarding any new kind of attack or enemy approach in cyberspace. Fulfilling this task, we work closely with our Military Intelligence Center and we are one of their main sources of gathering information cyber related. Next slide, please. Response is the last branch of our operative capabilities on our Joint Cyber Command. We could have named this capability attack or offensive unit, but we have decided for a soft approach, even though the main mission is to conduct offensive actions. To conduct this kind of operations, we are in need of good timing, legitimacy and proportionality. Exactly the same conditions needed with a physical aggression. Once we have reached this allowance scenario, we will use our cyber tools such as cyber weapon, qualified staff, safe environments to test our weapons and facilities where we have to locate our equipment. Next slide, please. I hope that after this brief presentation, you know something about our Spain Joint Cyber Command Center, our missions and our capabilities. If you have any further questions, please make us receive them and we will try to answer as fast as possible. Thank you so much and good luck.
네, 스페인
Thank you very much for that presentation. Colonel Perez Dennis from the Ministry of National Defense. Now, in this second session on the technology trends and the cooperation of the cyber security in Spain, we will hear the next presentation, three D online presentation on the cyber security usage in the Spanish industry from two S Grupo.
Especially I I T P and C D T I. For this opportunity to show you our company, some of this, its activity and future challenges. I will share a presentation. First of all, some figures so you can have an idea of the kind of company that we are. We have been working in cyber security already for more than eighteen years and we're over five hundred cyber security experts dedicated specifically to cyber security. We have developed our own technology through several research and development projects in cooperation with other entities all over Europe and other parts of the world also. And we have solutions in the area of SOC management, A P T detection and industrial cyber security, which is specifically for manufacturing, energy, et cetera. Our company has offices in seven countries and it's working in around thirty-five different countries all over the world. And we are working in different industries, ranging from government, military to manufacturing, energy distribution and production, healthcare, insurance, et cetera. Our key success factors are, first of all, our investment and research and development. We, as I said, we develop our own technology. We are knowledge generators and we collaborate with different research groups all over Europe. As second, our commitment to the customer through extensive experience in critical incident handling, consolidated SOCs providing services worldwide and a certified management model. And also solid references with many customers all over the world. Our services range from the incidents, response and handling, threat intelligence, monitoring and detection engineering, advanced security audit and G R C, governance, risk and compliance. This is a diagram showing the stack of our different products for monitoring, going from lower layer with sensors that monitor the infrastructure in our customers. I'm sorry. Here. Second, some different correlators that take this information and make decisions based on the different rules or different learning systems. And third, a way of showing this, this information to the operators, to the technical operators and a general situation of the, of the infrastructure for the, for the customer, for the management level. In governance, risk and compliance, we cover all the matters related to law, standards and organizational cyber security. As I said, we are also specialists in operational technology, cyber security. Going from the same phase where we can help our customers to design their equipment or their infrastructures to make sure that they are cyber secure through our operational phase where we can help, help them to make sure that the operation of the infrastructure is secure. And also, we also focus on people's security. We want to raise awareness among the different employees and managers in the organization so they are aware of the risk that they can incur with incorrect behaviors, for instance. And we also train them to avoid this kind of situations. These are some pictures of our labs in the area of industrial cybersecurity. As I said, we are dealing with things like manufacturing plants, distribution systems, energy distribution systems, or smart cities, for instance. Also with medical equipment in the health area. In research and development, we could say that we have been working all over these years in more than 50 different research and development projects with international collaboration. And our main areas are industrial cybersecurity, advanced attacks, APTs, Internet of Things, critical infrastructure. And our main current challenges in this moment are, first of all, process automation. What we want is to make sure that all the possible automations that we can introduce in SOC management are implemented, so we can increase productivity, reduce burnout in our technicians. For this, we use machine learning assistance that learn from the way the operators are solving the issues, the events, and then provide support to the technicians when they have to solve other similar events. Another area of interest is threat intelligence. And here, we are working on identifying behavioral patterns so we can predict attacks in the future. Also anomaly detection, which deals with identifying unknown threats through the use of machine learning. And lastly, SOC situational awareness, where we want to introduce a next generation interface to provide information to the technicians through immersive virtual reality interface, so we can make sure that the operator or the technician gets the information in a way that he or she can cope with, and make sure that they are always getting the most relevant information, and is not overwhelmed by a lot of different data. Thank you very much for your attention. And if you allow me, hats, sad, and thank you very much.
Yes, that was a very detailed presentation at the Cybersecurity Tapi done by SSS Group. Now, we will move on to another presentation given by CTO Sister Drag, Rafael Delgado of Sister and Drag.
CEO of the Tech Biometrics. Thank you very much for inviting me to this cybersecurity event, especially thanks to Jordi for thinking in the tech for this event. I'm going to introduce my company to you, especially in the cybersecurity sector, but also we are experts in audio and speech technologies, so I'm going to introduce you briefly all what we do. As I said, we are experts in audio and speech technologies, and we develop state-of-the-art core speech technologies. We don't usually go to final user applications, but we develop the recognition engines underneath. Because of that, we have a deep know-how in audio technologies, because all of our products come from in-house around the task. So this gives us a lot of flexibility for developing related technologies. And all of our solutions are available as C++ SDKs, and this is very important because they can be integrated into any system, and they are very efficient from a hardware point of view. So it can run in as a cloud service, but also as embedded systems where hardware restrictions are a problem. So they are very efficient, all of our recognition engines. And our company is integrated in Group Sister. They are very strong in 112 emergency call center solutions, and all of our solutions are integrated into Group Sister products. First, these are our audio and speech solutions already in the market. Our main solution is BioBox, is advanced security based on voice biometrics. We are answering the question, who is speaking? Obviously, a lot of application for cybersecurity environments. And second one is ReconBox, adaptable speech recognition, robust to noisy conditions. What is the transcription of the speech? But the key word here is robust. It's robust because ReconBox can adapt on the fly to noise environments and to specific speakers, so we can guarantee high recognition rates at any moment. Our third product, less known technology is AudioWatermark. This is a real steganography technology, because we can insert undetectable information into an audio signal. So we are answering the question, where comes this audio from? Was it modified? We are using this technology into emergency 112 emergency call centers to monitor sensitive calls. And the key concept here is the information, the watermark, is embedded into the audio signal itself, not at file level. Audio signal, that makes the watermark robust to MP3 compression or recording of the audio. So this is actual steganography technology. And our last solution, which developed a few months ago, is advanced AI-based voice cloning detection. Is he or she a human speaker? This has obvious application for cybersecurity environments, and it can act complementary to BioBox as an anti spoofing technology for attacks based on voice recordings and text or speech, but it also has a sense as a standalone product, as we will say, we will see later, because attackers lately are using advanced vocoders for impersonating real speakers. Next, very quickly, this is our new technologies and the roadmap we are developing right now. Sentiment analysis, detecting emotions based on the analysis of specific voice parameters. Is the customer angry or in the mood for buying? This has obvious applications in the call center sector. Next, stress level assessment, detection of stress, mental disorders, or physical pathologies analyzing the voice signal. Can airline pilots, truck drivers, or doctors deliver under high workload? This can be seen as a specific sentiment stress level, but it also has application by itself. And lastly, sleep apnea detection, detection of sleep apnea and other disorders through analysis of audio recorded during sleeps. Is my sleep repairing? Do I have a physical breathing pathology? Here, we are entering to the e-health sector, is quite different to the previous technologies. And next, what I think is most interesting for you, cybersecurity applications, obviously. Multi-factor authentication with voice biometrics is paramount here, because with voice biometrics, we can have user-friendly top-security authentication in apps, smartphone apps, e-commerce, on the cloud, or corporate sites. BioBox, as I mentioned before, can run locally in the smartphone or as a cloud service. So this gives us a lot of flexibility for a huge range of applications. Then we have, with TruePerson, I mentioned before, voice cloning detection in phone calls. This is one example, you can see more clearly with this, I think. In 2020, a Hong Kong-based bank was robbed, $35 million by attackers impersonating the CEO's voice of a big client. So they use advanced vocoders based on machine learning. They started from voice recordings of the CEO of this big client, and then customized the text-to-speech engine to impersonate this client. And then the director of the bank thought it was actually speaking with this client, and then $35 million were robbed by these attackers. But now, with TruePerson, we can monitor phone calls in real time. So that's why I mentioned before that TruePerson can act together with BioBox for anti spoofing measures, but also it can work as a standalone product for this monitoring phone calls in real time. Lastly, I think it's very interesting for you in Korea, because we have an international cooperation project with South Korean partners, precisely in cybersecurity sector. The project is called IDAS, Voice Identification as a Service. Our partner, we have two partners, Kcell, Korea Security Evaluation Laboratory, this is our main partner. They are experts in payment methods and also security certification services. So this is key for a cloud-based security service. And then KC, Korea Association of Cloud Industry, I'm sure you know it. This partner was key for promotion task and also for certification on the cloud, because IDAS is a cloud service, so this partner was key for this cloud certification. The project goals were develop a complete IDAS solution with secure centralized logging, identity management, and multi-factor authentication. Our competitive advantage is that we are the only IDAS in the market with voice biometrics, multi-factor authentication. Launch date is expected to second quarter next year, 2023. We got these awards, first we were awarded with the Eureka Shield, and then we got financed by Kiat, I'm sure you know Kiat. Kiat Finance Kcell was our partner, and then CDTI that finance DTEC here in Spain. So thank you very much for these two organizations that made possible development of IDAS. And well, that's all from my side. Right now, thank you very much again for inviting me to the seven. If you are interested in this presentation, just let me know, I can share it, no problem. Just ask Jordi and Jordi's slogan, and I can share the presentation with you. That's all from my side. Have a nice day. Bye bye.
고맙습니다. Thank you very much. That was a presentation from Sister and DTEC. We will now move on to the last presentation of this session. Mr. Ramon Sarrawat of the B. Disruptive is going to deliver pre-recorded presentation. The Disruptive works with the clients to deliver safe technologies and maintain safe environment. We also offer services for efficient digital conversion. We protect information of customers and customer assets so that cybersecurity will be in place in restricting potential threat. We have offices in Madrid, Panama City, and will be soon in Milano and Washington. We be where our clients and customers are. We have the latest solutions, and we have experts that can deliver to you the latest technologies. So let me introduce our company. We were born as a cybersecurity firm in 2016. We have grown very rapidly, and with 80 million, we hope to close this year with 80 million euro as ourselves. We have branch offices in Panama, Italy, and will have soon branch offices in US. And through SoCs, we protect customer informations. And we also have very skilled and talented workforce amounting to more than 250. Disruptive approach, high-quality service design, and through customers' support, we can offer you our team's support to secure your system and environment. Products can be with you throughout the lifecycle, and we can offer our own technologies and experience for you. Performance management, risk management, and for other areas, we can offer you consulting service through SoC 24/7 IT and OT, environment monitoring analysis services possible to detect any potential threat to offer your global vision. And we can protect your digital assets to test organizational security level. We can do various pilot tests and identifying your vulnerability to protect your assets. We can also advise you and train you so that you will be always ready for any potential threat. Our intelligence service offers visibility into real-world threat situation. We also link that with our people management skills. Smart city is the city of future. At the World Economic Forum, they said 70% of population by 2050 will live in the urban setting. So we need to focus on improving urban environment, including pollution, transportation, etc. So we can offer smart city consulting service from cybersecurity to realizing vertical solutions for this area. We can offer professional consulting for all related areas. We can select the best technology and best vendors to offer customized solutions for your company, for urban governments. And based on the needs of the smart city, we can offer you dashboard where all the information can be available at once. We also maintain through our systems and technologies and solutions cybersecurity to protect you. In the blockchain, besides encrypted encryptions, we offer different things. In NFT technologies are being used, real estate, art piece, securities, and bonds. So we have also tried to invest in NFT token market. These are asset-based new economies transferring to the new environment. The Disruptive is very familiar to this new environment, and we create new business areas to focus on this emerging technology and market. Consulting, development, training, support, and maintenance are all available, and we use our own infrastructure to develop our technologies. We have various tools to develop necessary technologies. And if there is any event, we can monitor this situation and respond to it through dedicated team. We can protect our sources through high-level SoC. We have a plug-and-play blockchain infrastructure to abstract client from complex environment, so that they can focus on their own business. We also have tokens for cultural We also have tokens for cultural heritage and NFT is used for open market and we also have B-Disruptive where your assets can be profit monetized through the NFT marketplace. Traditional sales market will be maintained, but with the NFT new additional sale channel will be available and that can be additional profit source. So we use AI technology and automated translation tools. Apologies for any mistakes. We are focused on cybersecurity, NFT, blockchain, smart city technologies to help you solve any business issues. You are interested to collaborate with Korean businesses and agencies? If your interests, please contact me. I do not speak Korean, but I'll be able to respond to your questions in English. It was honor to be able to participate in this event.
고맙습니다. Yes, thank you very much. And that was presentation by B-Disruptive. Particularly, I'd like to thank Mr. Lamed Sarawat for putting together that AI-based presentation. So with this, we already covered two sessions of the special session of Korea and Spain cybersecurity workshop. I'd like to thank all the speakers. So this closes the special session and we're going to break until three fifty, three thirty-five. Starting from three twenty, we're going to begin the opening ceremony, so be sure to be there. Thank you.